We should make it your own.
Okay, well then I will call this meeting to order and welcome to everyone who's here and to Karen and Fiona who are online. Is there any disclosure of community or interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none and hearing none. I need a mover and a second or to move into committee of the whole. And Bill? Do you like to read the motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Fair that council proceeded to commute the hall at 5:02 PM.
Would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
It's done.
Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. So Ramona, I'm assuming you're taking the lead on this one?
Yes, I can do that when it gets to the description of the service areas, I'll turn it over to Jeff to do that. At this time, I will start to share my screen. And let me know if you can see the screen.
Yes.
You can?
Okay, so we're here today to discuss the Central Elgin Water and Wastewater 2020 rate funded budget. Everybody has a copy of that and it's attached to the agenda. Essentially, the overview is speaks to that this budget was delayed this year primarily due to the extensive public outcry about rates and I'm sure council's no stranger to that. Then we had some COVID requirements for staff time and attention and some other items that we needed to turn our attention to. Water and wastewater rates in Central Elgin are high. And a preliminary review of background information that goes into forming the rates suggests that they need to be even higher to cover costs. And I'll point out those areas to you as we go through this proposed budget. The firm of Watson and Associates Economists Limited has been retained to update the rate study, but in the meantime, council approved maintaining the water and wastewater rates at 2019 levels for the year 2020. And so when it comes to a description of the departmental areas of responsibility, I will allow Jeff to lead us through what these systems are and what the operating highlights for 2019 were and the plans for 2020, much of which is has been underway.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So I'll start off with the water. So the water and wastewater section of the Infrastructure and Community Services Department is responsible for the operation, maintenance, design, construction and management of Central Elgin's water systems while at the same time meeting all provincial legislative and regulatory requirements. The Water and Wastewater Department shares the same operators. So that department consists of six licensed union operators and two non-union licensed supervisors. With support from the Infrastructure and Community Services Department. Water is supplied and distributed through the following supply systems. The Central Elgin Water Supply System, the Belmont Water Supply System, the Port Burrell Area Secondary Supply System, the Elmer Area Secondary System, the St. Thomas Secondary System, and finally, the St. Thomas Suburban Area Water System. Central Elgin staff operate the Central Elgin, Belmont and the Central Elgin portion of the St. Thomas Secondary System, while the other systems are operated by Aqua in the city of St. Thomas. Twenty nineteen operating highlights, we undertook upgrades to the SCADA servers. We took over water billing from the city of St. Thomas, who was had that contracted through Integris. So we took back the customers who live in the suburban area of St. Thomas, which would be Old Lynnhurst, Eastwood and Lindell. We undertook hydraulic modeling of the Port Stanley and Belmont Water Systems. And the former Physical Services Department was restructured into the Infrastructure and Community Services Department. Twenty twenty key initiatives. The construction of a new 300 millimeter water main on Southdale Line west of Sunset Drive. We are going to replace 300 rural radio meter transmitters to help read meters on dated units. Review review of the Central Elgin and St. Thomas Water Agreement. We're going to continue to review water assets and incorporate those into the water, the asset management plan and continue adding and updating water assets into the GIS mapping. So that's what I have for water. Did you want me to get into the wastewater as well or are we going to do that after we go through water?
I would suggest you go through both of them at once, Jeff, and then we can go through both budgets.
Okay, so the wastewater portion of the department. So the water wastewater section of the Infrastructure and Community Service Department is responsible for the operation, maintenance, design, construction and management of Central Elgin's wastewater systems while meeting all provincial legislative and regulatory requirements. We've already gone through the department. Central Elgin staff operate the Port Stanley and the Belmont Sewer Collection and Treatment Systems. Sanitary sewer systems in the St. Thomas suburban area, including Lynnhurst, Eastwood and Eastwood are operated by the city of St. Thomas. Twenty nineteen operating highlights. A new sanitary sewer extension was done on George Street in Port Stanley in support of the Kokomo Development. And twenty twenty key initiatives. A new sanitary sewer is being extended on Southdale Line west of Sunset Drive. Sanitary sewer extension on Sunset Drive from the bottom of the hill up to the new fire hall. Little Creek Sanitary Servicing on Hill High and Larry Streets. We're doing some upgrades to the electrical and electrical and control components of Pump Station 51 and the wastewater treatment plant in Port Stanley. Design of the sanitary sewer extension at Elm Line and Centennial Roundabout, so that that's as part of the county's project to install a roundabout at Elm and Centennial, we're going to extend the sanitary sewer outside the limits of the new roundabout and that's the budget in 2020 will just be for the design of that project. Sewer lining previously budgeted will be completed in 2021 and review of the St. Thomas Sewer Agreement.
Okay, at this stage, we'll just pause for any questions from the committee members?
One thing that I would say, Jeff, can you just so that those listening in or, you know, following the live stream? The new projects such, you know, for the the various areas where we're putting in new lines, et cetera, such as Hill and High, that these are, can you explain exactly how those are covered in cost?
Maybe I'll defer to Ramona. I'll start with Hill High and Larry Streets. I know that the cost was 263,000. For the cost of that, I can defer to Ramona to let her explain where those funds are coming from.
Thank you. It just, I think people would want to know, you know, where the funds do come for new construction, new housing, et cetera.
I through you, Mayor Martin, I believe what you are referring to is that it's a shared cost with the developer and there's a certain portion that the municipality is picking up and the developer is picking up a large chunk of those costs that relate to that development. Is that really what you were aiming at?
Yes, I just, you know, because people will be curious to know, I know we've said development pays for development, so they're going to wonder or ask, you know, whether they're, does this affect their water because we've put in new, their water rates, sorry, because we've put in some new infrastructure?
And I'm sorry, I don't have that specific split of costs right in front of me.
Mr. Perrin, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, just so just to clarify. There are costs that the municipality will front end for existing residents. However, council will be passing a bylaw to recover those costs back from the existing residents that are fronting the project when they connect. So they're not, they're not being borne by the rate inevitable, like for in perpetuity. The cost of those services will be recovered by the municipality either through new development that is being constructed as part of a subdivision that's going to use those sewers or from the existing residents that front on those streets that the sewers were put on Hill High and Larry Street when they connect.
Okay, so if they don't connect, then they don't pay it until they do connect?
That's correct. And based on past practice, the bylaw that council will have before them will be based on previous ones. And the past practice is that the charge is set by council, but it's indexed annually based on the Consumer Price Index. So if they choose not to connect for 10 years, then the rate that council sets will be indexed based on those 10 years in the Consumer Price Index for Ontario.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ramona.
Okay, so when we get to this budget, we look at some of our overall budget considerations for planning purposes. One of the things we look at is the commitments that we've made through prior budgets or through prior council resolution. And those projects are either underway or remain planned for completion. So the previous approved amounts are listed here. With respect to the Port Stanley Sewer Lining on Edith Cavell, I believe that's the project that Jeff referred to that was being postponed until next year. There's the Southdale Line Hill Reconstruction, which has a wastewater and a water share and that project's currently underway. And I am not certain if the controls and electrical work has already been done or is underway. Jeff, you can clarify on that for the wastewater treatment plant and pump station 51. But these are the committed funds that have already been approved that need to be carried forward through the reserves. And then in 2020, the amounts that were to be used were most of the controls and electrical work and the complete share of Southdale Line Hill Reconstruction for both wastewater and water and then most of the Edith Cavell Sewer Line. So Jeff, in terms of those two projects in where they're at exactly, can you maybe speak to that?
Yeah, the, the wastewater treatment plan and pump station 51, electrical and controls are being, the work is underway now and we're hoping to have that expensed here this fall or early, excuse me, early winter. The other one, the sewer lining project, we are going to we would like to join in the city of St. Thomas's contract with that to get a better price. The city of St. Thomas has notified us that they will not be undertaking that work, so we're going to, we'd like to defer that until the spring, early summer of 2021.
Okay, so the committee can see that required for carry forward is about 1.3 million. And when we look at our reserve balance continuity, we look at our ending balance in 2019. We take a look at what we've already approved and committed as expenses to come out of those reserve funds. And we look at the end balance after our commitments. We look at what we've budgeted for in 2020. And some of that work is already underway. And then we look at our projected balance after our commitments and our 2020 capital projects. You will see that the water rate stabilization reserve and both the wastewater rate stabilization reserve are in a debit position, which means that they are not funded. So we are short by $2.3 million. 300,000 is budgeted and come from development charge reserves for a total reserve transfer of 2052, 510 in 2020. Development charges cannot be counted upon until the building permits are pulled and those development charges are paid. And then we have to apply the amount of development charges only against the specific projects for which we're allowed to levy development charges. So it does look year to date that we are going to be able to cover that 300,000 and in fact, we may be able to cover more than that 300,000 from our development charges collected year to date. When I look at income and expenses year to date, it looks like for all other items, we are on track to be on or ever so slightly under budget. The capital plan for 2020. I guess I should stop there. Are there any questions on the reserves?
Questions? Go ahead, Ramona. I don't see any.
Okay, so the 2020 capital plan was pared down by the infrastructure team. Fair, a fair bit from what was originally proposed. Because of the outcry on wastewater and water rates, they pulled back on the number of items that they felt needed to be done. What remained is the Little Creek servicing for Larry Hill and High, which we've already spoken to with the upfront share being 263, 600. Sunset sanitary sewer extension for 500,000, as you know, that's underway. And the Woodland Road Pump Station upgrades and radio transmitters. I believe those last two items are to be completed in the fall. Is that correct, Jeff?
That is, that is correct. The Woodland Road Pump Station upgrades are underway and almost complete. And we're just waiting on budget approval to go ahead with the radio transmitters. So with budget approval, we'll get underway with that work.
So then we get to our proposed rate funded budget summary. You can see that we need to have a zero zero dollar budget for our rate funds. That means that our rates are supposed to fully fund the cost of our wastewater and water systems. But as you saw earlier, they are actually putting us in a deficit position for our reserves by about 2.3 million. For the water budget, we've got user fees and charges in line with what it actually was in 2019. We've got reserve transfers that have been put in the budget here to make sure that our budget comes to zero. We've got other revenue estimated to be very similar to what it was in 2019. We've got some fines and penalties that are estimated to be a little bit lower. 2019 did seem to be an anomaly in the overall trend of fines and penalties. Our licenses, permits and rental income is in line with prior years as well. And when I take a look at year to date figures, all those seem to be in line with what we're expecting. On the expense side, we have very similar situation. You can see the 70,000 that we looked above in the water budget coming out of the capital requests. And the rest of our numbers are expected to be in line with what we have projected. You will note that our long-term debt payment, because our principal payments are a little bit higher every year, that that is increasing year over year. On the wastewater budget, we have a very similar picture. Our user fees and charges appear to be in line with what we're expecting. Reserve transfers, we will need to be transferring 1.8 million out of our reserves in order to have a zero budget. And then licenses, permits and rents, fines and penalties, that income is in line with previous years. Same with the expense side, the equipment charges, rents, our salaries and wages, contracted services are projected to be way down from what they were in previous years. Material, but that partially is because of our capital request line items would show up in contracted services by the end of the year. And materials and supplies are in line as well with, with 2019 actual. Any questions there?
Council Fair?
I'm just wondering, I see the 2020 budget on the columns of the 2020 budget, are those supposed to be actual or do we have any actual figures for 2020 to see how we are looking up to this point or, or some month here?
As, as I mentioned earlier, Counselor Fair, I did check against our 2020 budget to actual figures. We are looking to be in line on the income side for both water and wastewater. We are slightly under year to date. If you go month by month for the expense side, however, there are a number of expenses that don't come in and they're fairly large numbers that don't come in until closer to the end of the year. So we're at about 55% on our expenses and we're at about 65% on our income, which is where we should be month over month.
Council Fair?
I'm just wondering if what, what month that takes us to when you say 55 or 65%? And I'm also wondering, do you have an internal, okay, and do you have an internal report that you could possibly just send us an email with some of those figures?
I can, however, it won't be entirely up to date because our payments are generally 30 days. So the figures I'm telling you are as at the end of August. Knowing that some larger invoices don't come in till closer to the end of the year. And also that our bank reconciliations are not up to date, so they won't be 100% complete.
Council Krebbitz?
Ramona, in the water budget, there's a line item revenue from other municipalities. Could you explain that line? And, and there is nothing in 2019, just curious about that?
I believe that relates to the water billing for customers from the Lynnhurst area and Lloyd or Jeff may be able to better answer that question.
Lloyd or Jeff?
The, from other municipalities, there are certain areas water lines that we actually sell water to an adjacent municipality. So in Lynnhurst, there are a few customers that receive water off of our system along Wellington Road as well along Dexter Line. Same situation applies anywhere near the border of Central Elgin. Orwell, there's a few more customers and then in Belmont, there's a couple of customers in that area as well where water is sold to residents in Malahide.
Are the lines blank at the moment?
Yes, I, I can't answer that. Not sure.
Yeah, I guess Lloyd will have to have a side conversation as to whether there are customers that should have been billed that perhaps were not billed in 2019.
I believe they were billed. I'm just not sure why they're not there.
Council Fair?
One other quick one. I'm just wondering, given with COVID and the waiver of billings and things, are we anticipating in 2020 an exceptional or an increased bad debt allowance or carrying out much more receivables?
Given our property tax experience, which we have analyzed in a fair amount of detail, we are not expecting that.
Madam Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Perrin.
All right, just to revisit that question about revenue from other municipalities. When I look at that and there was revenue in 2018 to 2017, that's, so the previous arrangement with the city of St. Thomas is that the city build or yeah, the, the city build our customers and took the revenue and refunded to the municipality our share based on the water service agreement. In 2019, we took over responsibility for billing. So that revenue isn't showing up as coming from other municipalities. We're obtaining that revenue through the water rate when we bill those customers because previously in 2018 and previous years, we did not bill them.
So it's supposed?
Go ahead.
So it's probably showing up in the user fee and charges line?
Yes, it should be.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's showing up for me in a water consumption build city. Does that make sense, Lloyd?
It would be water consumption build as, as well as the base charges build. They pay both base charge and, and consumption charge?
I don't think the GL separates that out.
The reason obviously, as Lloyd has said for the blank, is it's now in our user fees and charges and it's not through the city. We're doing it direct now. Council Row?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Knowing that there's all kinds of development and a lot of growth going on. As I, if I look at the water budget, the user fees and charges from say 2018 to today has gone up, say, a million dollars, which makes sense because of all of the, the build. But the wastewater budget has only gone up $200,000 there about. So I realized that not all new homes are on sewers, but I would have expected that to be actually a little bit higher, knowing where a lot of the subdivisions are being built and they would be part of that sewer user fee increase.
Mr. Lee?
So part of that revenue increase would be those formerly St. Thomas customers that are, that's where that revenue is now showing up in part.
For water only?
Water only.
Sewer is still built in St. Thomas.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of taking that in-house that changed that?
It sort of implied that, sorry, it would sort of imply that 50% of Central Elgin customers are on, are on sewer, 50% aren't, as opposed to sort of 100% of them being on municipal, well, not 100%, but the majority being on municipal water. I don't know, it just feels like if there's still a little bit imbalance there, but.
Because certainly the vast, any of the new development that we've had is on both water and sewer.
Yeah, I would just expect it to be a little bit more in, in line, but because it wasn't it just like $500,000 from St. Thomas that came over? Which would mean then leaving another 500,000 in the waters, but you have 200,000 in, in the wastewater increase. So I said it's about 50% increase, if that makes sense, from sewer to septic users, then I suppose. Just a question.
Mr. Lee?
So the way the money flowed before on the water side of things was that people paid their bill to Integris, who was the contractor for the city of St. Thomas for billing. So Integris paid the all of the water revenue to St. Thomas and then St. Thomas paid Central Elgin what was left over our share. Now we're filling, we're collecting all of the money, but then some of that money we have to pay to St. Thomas for services for water. And to complicate things on the wastewater side, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but again, Integris was the contractor for St. Thomas, but they paid us money. And then we turned around and paid St. Thomas. So now we're collecting and we're still, you know, paying St. Thomas, but that was the way it was previously to, for those suburban areas, Lynnhurst, Eastwood, Lindell.
So then which line is? So then which line is is covering the you pay back to St. Thomas then? Which expense line is that covered under?
That should be under materials and supplies.
There's 500,000 there.
And that makes sense then because it's gone from 474 to 955. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ramona at this point? If not, go ahead, Ramona.
Okay, I know Lloyd had his hand up there for a little while. If there's anything he wanted to add, he's got the history on this. Some of these changes were before my time.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Your worship, Mr. Leach covered it with the with the historical way the money flowed for water and wastewater in the suburban area, so it's been covered.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ramona.
All right, so I will move along then to our, just a different way of showing our revenues. You can see that most of our revenues for water.
Revenue to us and now it's confusing.
Sorry, was there a comment there, Dennis?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So most of our revenues come from user fees and charges, and this is water and wastewater combined. We're looking at 27% of our revenues coming from transfers from reserves, which we don't have. So the tax funded part of the budget will need to foot that particular amount. We do have on the on the Central Algon rate funded budget, we only have about 4 million of available reserves. So we will run out of reserves for this transfer within a couple of years. And then you can see the rest of our revenues are from other, just general other revenue lumped together that were in the various line items above. You can see that for our expenses for water and wastewater together, that a large portion of our expenses are long term debt. Now, those can be offset by development charges, but we don't get the fee for a development charge until a building permit is pulled. So the more development we have, the more revenue we have in order to offset our long term debt. A lot of that will drop off in 2025. About 22% of our expenses are materials and supplies, 13% are salaries and wages, and 11% going to capital requests and 7% going to contracted services. By the time we get to the end of the year, you will see these two amounts really come together. Contracted services, most of our capital is contracted services, so that would be 18% altogether. And then, of course, we have our other minor amounts, rents and financial expenses. If we look at what.
Sorry, Counselor Row has a question.
So I just was going to go back to the reserve comment that you you made. So between the two water and wastewater, we're $2.3 million short. I I can't recall, was that contemplated in the main? Call it the tax funded budget? So so it's kind of built in already, given that we're doing this budget after the tax funded budget? Or is there risk there?
It is not included in the tax funded budget. And one of the reasons for holding off on this budget was the public outcry and seeing what what could be done. When we started to look at that, we realized we were in a worse situation than what we were actually anticipating. And so financially, because we're so late in the year, we're just, we just need an approved budget for 2020 so that Watson and Associates can finish their study and we can work those numbers into a long term financial plan and something more comprehensive for 2021.
Then, Ramona.
Sorry?
Go ahead with next part of your.
All right, so then we take a look at what's up and what's not compared to 2019 actual versus budget. And you'll see that our user fees and charges, we are projecting them to be slightly up due to growth. Reserve transfers, of course, way up for what we need to balance our budget. Other revenue, very similar. And the other ones are just minor differences there. Fines and penalties, that really varies every year. So 2019 was exceptionally high. I think in 2020, we budgeted more in line with previous years. We did have a provincial conditional grant come in in 2019. I believe that was the tail end of our wastewater treatment plant grants, but I I can't recall exactly what that was for. And then when we get to the expense side, you'll see that we are down in a number of our expenses. Again, capital requests need to be added to contracted services for an equivalent comparator. And we're in line with salaries and wages, materials and supplies, and our long term debt. So just another way of presenting the same information year over year. Any questions on that?
Seeing none, go ahead.
Okay, and then for our service area breakdown of revenue and expenses, this is showing where our operating revenues are coming from by service area. Again, the same information, just presented a little bit differently so that you can see things in in a different manner. They may prompt questions in a different manner. Our capital revenue by service area, that's 100% funded out of reserve transfers. And then when we get to the expenses, you can see our operating expenses by service area, what they're for. And again, our capital expenses by service area, what they're for.
Counselor Fair.
Given we don't have a balance sheet here, I'm just wondering, the long term debt seems seems high. I know I've I've kicked around ideas, thinking if it wouldn't be a good idea to approach the government to try and see about getting some extensions on amortization periods. I'm just wondering how much we've got now. And if we did try and approach like that, it would cost the Ontario Government nothing if they really wanted to help us instead of staying with this 10 year on financing on a long term asset. Maybe moving to a 20 or 30 year would make a big difference in our debt servicing. So first, I guess the question is, how many more years are on this? Long long term debt is going to be paid out at about $3 million or whatever it is a year. And is there a possibility we could get an extended amortization of some sort or approach the government about negotiating something like that?
So I'm just going to share a different screen with you. Moved over. Essentially, the answer to that, Counselor Fair, is that we are locked in with our debt. Sure, the screen. Okay, are you seeing? Are you seeing my debt page? Okay, so when we have our water and sewer debt, and let me just make sure this is filtered only for water and sewer. Okay, you can see that a lot of this debt, let's just start with the water side of things, was issued in 2005, 2007, 2009, 10, 16, 17. I'm just going to filter on the principal portions of the debt. You can see what the original amounts were there. So that total comes to 22,000 of debt overall. That's been issued since 2005. You can see their annual payments add up to about 1.4 million on the water side. And the total principal remaining from 2020 to 2042, because that debt is locked in and some of it up all the way to 2042, there's 9.7 million remaining in debt on the water side. Okay, so that just shows you a little bit of what's what's remaining in the debt. And this took us all the way from, let's see, I went back as far as 2009. Let me hide those columns and just show what's remaining. There's the 2019 numbers, the 2020 numbers. So you can see a lot of this debt will drop off in 2025. And then quite a bit more in 2027, except for one that goes all the way out to 2035 on the water side.
I'm sorry, Ramona, can you tell us which one goes that long?
Yes, I can. Just a second here. So the one that goes till 2035 is the one that was issued in 2010 under bylaw 1206 for four and a half million.
You don't know what the project was.
I believe it was debt financing to cover a number, a combination of previous projects that had not previously been debt financed. I'm not 100% sure that that was it because there's also the one that was issued in 2017 for the same reason, for various water main projects. Perhaps someone who's been here long enough to remember what was done in 2010 can help you with that answer.
Don.
I believe it does include like some of the work that was done in Belmont with the water tower, the upgrades to the well system. But it was a combination of of water projects that were just being carried carried on the municipal books, but hadn't had any kind of formal debt issued for them.
So they were projects that occurred probably before 2010.
Or a number of years before.
Okay. Tom?
Going from memory, but I thought, um, Sylvia and I were on a committee and we tackled the Lynnhurst problem, the new Lynnhurst. Their city was getting all, we did a lot of changes then.
Yeah, Lynnhurst would be in that number too.
Because they were getting all the revenue, you know.
And work would have been in there too.
Yes, I think that probably.
Was it was various projects, but yes, Lynnhurst.
Till Lynnhurst, Belmont, Water Tower, et cetera.
There'd be work all over Central Algon.
All over, yeah, so it was a combination of things that hadn't been debt financed. But yes, Counselor Fair.
I don't know if you can answer this or not. I'm just wondering, how can one project go so far and the others, we have such short amortization periods relative to the life of the asset?
It's the agreement that was made at the time it was borrowed. So certainly when I, you know, I mean, we've never gone to those great long ones since. That was just, that was back. Mrs. Larmour was treasurer at that time, was she not? Yeah. That's back two treasurers ago that that happened.
Going too short's a problem too.
Well, I think there's there's two sides to that. So there was a time when municipalities looked at a user pay system and financed of all capital projects for the life of the asset or the estimated life of the asset that matched an amortization schedule most closely. And what happened back in the 80s and and 90s was that municipalities incurred a lot of debt on that basis, to the point where a lot of the tax rate was going to pay off debt instead of being available for operating. So then the pendulum swung in the thought process that you needed to do a pay as you go system and you needed to save up for your asset before you purchased it. And so it went from finance everything so that the users end up paying for it to let's save up everything before we build it for the users to access. I think the ideal, to me, the ideal position would be somewhere in the middle. But those are the different theories that were going on at the time some of these may have been issued. So you'll see older debentures for longer terms and some of the newer debentures going a little bit shorter term, depending what it's paying for. So the wastewater treatment portion of debt allocated to water went over 25 years because those would have been two two capital costs on one debenture, so that was taken out over 25 years. I don't know that you would want to encumber your future taxpayers for longer than 25 or 30 years. Again, it depends on the nature of the asset. So for the fire hall, we recommended a 10 year term only because the rate was that much better and the taxpayers would save money overall by about half a percent, which was added up to, you know, quite a bit of tax savings overall for the taxpayer. So those are the considerations that you would make at the time you incur the debt, what rate you're being offered for what term. So I'll just switch over to the sewer portion of the debt, which is the wastewater portion of the debt. And you can see here the same kind of thing that we've got 20 years, 10 years, 10 years and 25 years. You can see that the original amounts of the debt added to 25, almost 26,000 for the wastewater portion. Our annual payment for the wastewater portion is about two, just under 2.1 million. And you can see the interest and principal remaining is 23 million from 2020 right out till 2042. You can see again that a large portion of the debt drops off in 2025 as the last payment. So by 2026, it drops off with the longest term one continuing right out till 2042. So counsel, you do have this tab as part of your property tax Excel sheet that you received. So it is something that you can look into the exact details of each debenture, should you choose to do that.
Okay, any questions, further questions? No one has any further questions? So obviously today we have to adopt a water and wastewater budget. And I think the deadline is coming right up that we have to get this done. And I believe what we, you know, we we dropped some of the projects that were originally in the proposal. Colleen?
Could I just ask one other question?
Certainly.
Madam Mayor, it's just, just to confirm again. So this is a forecast, a budget for 2020 that has no actuals in it whatsoever. And it is based on which rates, the 2020 rates or the 2019 rates?
It's based on the 2019 rates.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not? Do we have a, someone would like to make a motion about adopting this water? Sorry, Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, just in terms of process, what counsel have to do is recommend the budget for adoption by counsel and authorize staff to give the required notice.
Right. Yes, Counselor Fair.
It it shows the user fees going up 2.3%. Now, I think in the original study, it showed around seven or eight percent annual increase. Does that mean that this, even though we approved this one, it really is not going to change our rates other than what the study was? Or is it saying now there's going to be an additional 2.3% roughly increase in user fees?
Can you answer that? Mr. Leach, you want to?
Essentially, Madam Mayor, the the budget is a status quo budget. It reflects the the current rates that are being charged this year. There won't be any rate increase that we anticipate before the end of this year. So it's got reflects scaled back capital projects so that with the rate study, the 2021 budget will hopefully reflect the new rates and the capital projects that are identified that support that rate going forward. So this is just a, as I say, a status quo. So this is just, as I say, a status quo budget just for this year to reflect the as-is situation.
Mrs. Wilson, do you have a motion there? Yes?
Madam Mayor, I believe you see the motive.
Close, yeah.
The whole and then pass it. I did prepare the motion with counsel's intent. You know, you're giving staff direction to prepare the bylaw under the notice by law provision, and then you would bring it to meeting of October 13th, I believe, because we do have to give proper notice. And Monday, September 28th, meeting would not be enough notice.
So we need a mover and a seconder to move out of committee of the whole. Yes, go ahead, Dennis.
Ramon, I don't know if you can answer this. By locking our rates at the 2019 rates as opposed to putting them to the 2020 rates, which we haven't done in the last nine months, is there a percentage that this is going to increase the rates if everything was to remain the same? It's a vague question. What's the cost to the municipality keeping the rates lower? I don't, it's really a vague question. I don't know if you can answer something like that or give a percentage increase. Like instead of the 2.3% increase, is it going to be a 7% increase tomorrow or next year to make up for this? I don't know if you can answer something that vague at this time.
That calculation has not been done. The 2.3% is essentially a growth, a growth increase based on similar, the same, the same rate. So counsel decided to keep the rate the same, even though a recommended 7% or 8% increase was on the books. So that was primarily due to public outcry. So we were a little bit stuck as to how do we handle this? There's huge public outcry about our rates. Yes, we know our rates are high. We know we're in this deficit position. So that partially figuring out what we could do and getting counsel's approval to revisit the wastewater and water rate study is the way forward so that we can say, okay, we've taken a look at our water and wastewater rates again. We've taken a look at our costs involving the changes that were made with the Lynn Hurst and that area bordering St. Thomas. We'll include that in the additional rate study. Unfortunately, when we did take a look, we found some costs that weren't included, and they were relatively large costs that weren't included in the original study. So what you're going to find going forward, I think, when the revised rate study and that second, second look and second set of eyes comes back, I think you're going to find that you're going to have to implement a fairly substantial increase for 2021 in order for your rate-funded budget to fully fund the costs that are there. Unless counsel chooses to fund that by property tax, in which case you would also be looking at a fairly large property tax increase to fund the deficit. So you're going to be caught either way. At this point, we just need a budget passed for 2020. We know we're well into the year. We know what we have to do to get numbers to you for 2021, and we just need to be able to have an approved budget to move forward with that.
Yes. It's our responsibility, sitting here, to run a zero-deficit water wastewater schedule. So what we're doing here, this is false what we're doing. We shouldn't be keep going down this same route. I don't know how long we can put this off. It's almost illegal what we're doing.
Well, I think.
Running out of deficit.
Watson doing the water and wastewater study in that committee, that would give us a far better specific number that we need to do. And I think part of the problem is, I mean, we're almost at the end of September. There's only three months left in this year. So I think that's why we just, you know, and we had agreed earlier in the year that we would freeze the rates until the study was done. And the study hasn't been completed. So that's why I believe we're, we're just leaving them frozen for this time. I agree, you know, we can't run a deficit. We're borrowing a huge amount of our reserves. So. Mr. Leach?
The only thing, other thing I can say is, and even the existing rate study contemplated that the municipality might have to borrow from its reserves, or borrow from itself to cover any deficits from year to year in the water and wastewater. And as you see, particularly for the next five, six years, until some of that debt falls off. Certainly, it's an option for counsel. If counsel decided before the end of the year, before the conclusion of the rate study, it wanted to implement one of the already recommended rate increases, the one that was deferred, that is an option for counsel if you didn't want to wait till the study was completed. And then when the study is completed, do an additional increase, whatever is recommended at that time. Certainly, counsel can do that.
Thoughts before we move out of committee of the whole? Nobody has anything more to say, so, all right. We need a mover and a seconder to move out of committee of the whole. Counselor Kravitz, Counselor Rowe? To read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Kravitz, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that counsel adjourned from committee of the whole at 5:57 PM.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook? Counselor Cook?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And would you, if we, do you need a mover and seconder before? We need a mover and seconder for adoption of this or a recommendation to staff to bring us a bylaw and do all the proper notification, et cetera. Do we have a mover? Counselor Rowe, seconder?
Yeah.
Counselor Kravitz? Okay, or Fiona Wynn? Go ahead and read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Kravitz, that counsel direct staff to give notice as per counsel's notice by law of counsel's intent to pass a bylaw respecting the 2020 water wastewater budget at counsel's meeting dated Tuesday, October 13th, 2020.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the final resolution, do you have, need a mover and seconder for adjournment? Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yeah, for sure.
Seconder?
Fiona.
Fiona, thank you. Call, read the motion then, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Wynn, that the special meeting of council be adjourned at 5:59 PM and the next regular planning meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, September 28th, 2020.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
You going to vote against that one, Dennis?